Okay. Okay. We wouldn't know what to do then. Okay. That's right. Yeah, as long as you... That's right. Right. So you don't get feedback from that? And that's perfect. Excellent. All right. Thank you. Hey, Jody. Hi, Diane. Hello, Allison. Just waiting for Mr. Mark and we can get started as soon as we see his face. Okay, thank you. That's better. Well, maybe we should. We can give him one more minute. No, Mr. Mark yet. Okay. I kind of think so. We just... Just got an email I was reading.
I texted him to see if he was coming.
Oh, great. Okay.
Chair Hinton?
Yes.
I'm assuming you saw the email from Mr. Chandler that he may be joining us late?
Right. Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
I did. Thank you. I have a hard time reading emails at the last minute, so... Why don't we just get started and then hopefully he'll join us? Okay. I'd like to call the Lincoln City Urban Renewal Agency meeting of July 13, 2020 to order. It is currently 4:32. And I don't know if anyone wishes to be here to comment, but if you do, you can enter the building by the upstairs door on the second floor and then you can come in. Chambers are set up for people to be distanced from one another, so it's open for that kind of comment. Are there any changes to the agenda that you have, Allison? Or Noah? Anyone else have any? Okay, great. If people wish to watch this meeting, they can do that through the Lincoln City website, or they can watch on Channel 4. And so if we could ask Mr. Twig to do roll call for us, thank you.
Here.
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 Okay, thank you. And then we are going... We don't have any minutes to look at, so we're going to go down to Special Order of Business and Presentations. And the first one is Economic Development Toolbox: New Application for Commercial Facade Improvement Loan. So we've got a little bit of history about this. This is a loan that was approved quite a while ago, a few years ago, and wasn't used. And now the person is ready to use it and needs to reapply or resubmit, so I'll turn it over to you, Allison.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Good evening, agency members. It's great to see you all. So this is a loan, as Chair Hinton mentioned. The first application for this loan we received was in 2015. And really, at that time, we had taken it to the Loan Committee to have discussion. And the Loan Committee said that as long as the revenue for the property owner was sufficient to make the loan payments, which is normal for any loan that we would look at, that the Loan Committee would recommend approval to the Urban Renewal Agency. We let the applicant know, and at that time, the applicant decided that they needed a little more time to think about things. And so here we are, five years later. They inquired again earlier this summer. And we said, "You know, we still have all your information, and would you like to change anything about your project?" And for the most part, they are not. It is still a facade improvement loan. And they did ask for $40,000, and they they said they were ready to go. So we went ahead this time, and since it had already gone to the Loan Committee, and it's a pretty straightforward facade improvement loan, we decided to skip the step of the Loan Committee again for a second time and just take it straightforward to the Urban Renewal Agency for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions. And you can see there's a redacted loan review that talks about how much it would be, what the payments would be, about $345 a month for 10 years. And they will be doing a re-siding of the front and the back of the building. They have a little shed that's connected. They'll be doing a new roof for that, and then adding a new entryway that would be gated. So it's pretty standard. I'm happy, again, to answer any questions you might have. And the loan-to-value ratios and the credit checks and all of that were redone in 2020. We did not rely on the 2015 information, and everything came back just fine.
Great. Are there any questions for Allison about this loan? No questions. Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the loan.
So moved.
And who is that, please? Riley? Thank you, Riley. How about a second?
A second.
Diane Kooz seconded. And because this has to do with some money, David Twig, can we borrow you back again? Thank you. Could you do a roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Okay. Great. Thank you. And the next thing we have on our agenda is the Economic Development Toolbox for Housing, which we're very excited to get all of this pulled together. And I think that's Jody's. Hi, Jody.
Hi. Thank you. Thanks, Chair Hinton. So this agenda item, we're talking about the residential economic development tools. So the reason we're bringing this to you tonight, City Council has made Housing a Goal, Housing in General for Lincoln City. And City Council and the Urban Renewal Agency both asked staff to come back with options for programs to encourage private and partner sector to encourage development for housing, to address housing in Lincoln City. And so that's what we're doing here tonight. And you may recall in May, we brought the facade improvement and energy efficiency loan programs to you with included criteria for residential properties. And we had a good discussion about that. And we realized staff had some more work to do and some more research before we were able to determine the criteria for residential programs. And so that's what we wanted to do tonight, is to have more of a discussion about what these programs should look like and what that criteria should be. And we do have a PowerPoint to go along with this, so Allison is going to pull that up.
Yes, and I apologize, David. I forgot to mention to you that I would be running a PowerPoint this evening. If it's possible for me to share the screen, that would be great. Okay, thanks so much. Okay, can everyone see the screen okay?
No.
No, okay. Try again here. Okay, how about now?
Yeah, that worked.
Oh, good. Okay. Great. And now it's okay?
Yes. Thank you, Allison.
Okay, great. Let me know, Jody, when you want to advance it.
Yeah, can we go to the next slide, please? All right, so how we've kind of structured this presentation, I wanted to give a brief review of the existing housing stock and the projected housing needs, which, of course, the U of L had seen as City Council. Allison and Anne Marie did the housing update back in May. But we wanted to bring that information to the Urban Renewal Agency as well. So we'll go through that, and then we have some policy-level questions that we need answered in order to develop these programs. So we'll go through these higher-level questions at the second part of the presentation, in hoping that answers to those questions will... Staff will be able to take that and bring back these tools at a future meeting. So you can go ahead and slide. So a lot of these figures we're going to go through with the Housing Needs Assessment that was completed in 2017, so just keep that in mind. So the existing housing stock in 2017, we had 5,734 housing units in Lincoln City. And this graph here gives a really good representation of how the housing units are distributed throughout the city, looking at single-family detached townhomes, multifamily mobile home units, and manufactured homes. Can we go to the next slide? So then the Housing Needs Assessment breaks down what the projected housing units needed over 20 years will be. So there's two scenarios. Scenario A looks at the baseline housing forecast, and that's based on population trends and the seasonal trends. And then you have baseline scenario B, which is the baseline with the additional workforce housing needs, so taking into account a lot of the workforce that doesn't live in Lincoln City. And that shows that there is a need for workforce housing in Lincoln City. So what we've done here is we averaged the two scenarios, so looking just right down the middle of these two scenarios, over 20 years would be 1,649 additional housing units needed in Lincoln City. And so if we're just looking at the average, that's about 82 additional units per year. Are there any questions about how those figures came about? Okay. And then another thing we wanted to look at are the projecting housing unit types. And so it's a similar idea here. We broke it up by Scenario A and Scenario B, and those were from the Housing Needs Assessment. And then we just found the average if we're looking down the middle between those two scenarios. And that's just showing the different housing types over 20 years, and it definitely looks like a lot more single-family detached homes, but also an emphasis on growing the multifamily and manufactured homes and townhomes as well. We also wanted to look at housing units built in recent years. So since the Housing Needs Assessment was completed, and so that's an average for single-family detached homes, an average of 50.75 a year, 1.75 townhomes or duplexes completed every year, 16 multifamily units completed per year, and then four manufactured housing units completed each year. And so I believe we're, I think it's, we're behind by like 30 units based on what the projections are. Okay, yeah, and then you can go to the next slide. We also wanted to look at the projected housing affordability, because this is what we'll really be looking at when we're going through these economic development tools, and what income level or housing value we want to focus on for these programs. So Exhibit 31 breaks down the median family income level for Lincoln County. So there's the upper middle, lower middle, low, and very low. And then it also, you can see the approximate attainable home price for those income bracket levels. And we can come back to this slide later when we look at the program eligibility. So before we jump into these policy-level questions, are there any comments or questions about the existing housing stock?
I just had this to say. I can't see everybody all at once, so if you use your little participant button and then raise your hand, that way I'll scroll through when there's opportunities to ask questions. I don't see any hands. Oh, there's a hand, Diane. Go ahead.
Okay, on the multifamily units, it says average of 16. Does that include all the apartments that were just built?
No. Yeah, so that only goes up through 2019. And I can look at...
I mean, they were built, I think, last year or the year before.
I may have to revisit this.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Casper.
There we go.
There we are.
So we're looking at information where the data is from 2014, and then the housing projection here is from 2017. And so if we're basing the baseline in Scenario A on just the growth, the permanent residence is 948. And then we're adding in BRDs and second homes. And then in Scenario B, we're talking about the workforce needed, which is 330. So I guess I'm wondering why we aren't focusing on permanent residents directed specifically at workforce housing rather than including the other other housing aspects? Is there a reason why they're all thrown in together?
The reason that... Oh, go ahead, Jody.
I would need to go scroll back to see... And Diane, sorry, Counselor, sorry, Agency Member Kooz. I'm pretty sure that the apartment buildings that were constructed in the last year or two were included in the counts. With, we got our numbers from the Planning Department, and so the building permits were included. And I think that those projects, the apartments that were built near the villages that CAFGAD had, and then also the apartments that were built next to Buy Mart, I think those happened in two different years. So I think that's where the counts are in the 2019 or 18, and then 17. Then the other question, Agency Member Casper, that's a good question as well. With the scenario A and B, and the average of Scenario B being baseline and workforce, that's partly why we averaged just to, you know, this was a needs assessment, and needs assessments are really based on a lot of number data, and so we decided that we would just try to shoot for the middle. Now, if you would rather that when we're talking about housing with the Urban Renewal Agency or with the City Council, that we use a higher or lower number as kind of our target of what we're trying to accomplish, we can certainly do that. We just wanted to make sure that we respected both kind of trajectories based on that Housing Needs Assessment by doing the average. And you're right, I mean, we, you all, have the ability to design any number of economic development tools apart from the whole funding conversation to address any specific objective you would like. If it is only to address workforce housing, and you want to define that as a certain income bracket, that's completely up to you as well. So we're here and ready to have those conversations and then implement however you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Up till now? Okay. Jody, it's back to you.
So I think we can go ahead and jump into our policy-level questions if you can bring up that PowerPoint again, Allison.
I'm sorry. It's showing for me, but it's not showing for you, so I apologize. Okay.
Can you go back two slides?
Thanks, Jody.
Yeah. So the first question we had, and we've already kind of addressed this as we've gone through the Economic Development Toolbox several times, are what tools can be used to address residential needs in Lincoln City? And so these are the list of tools that we, staff has identified that can be used to address residential needs. So that's the facade improvement and energy efficiency loan programs, and then pre-development assistance and infrastructure partners programs are all existing programs that have been talked about only for commercial. And so we would like to bring the discussion around to including residential properties in these programs. And then there is the mixed-use housing loan program and the workforce housing loan program as well. And those are two new programs that have been adopted as part of this wide economic development toolbox. But the programs have not really been identified or straightened out yet, so... So these are the tools that we're looking at for residential properties. So the big question that we've dove into quite a bit is what should be the eligibility criteria for these economic development tools? And this is something that, we have a few different ways to look about this, but as Allison said, if there's a different income level that you all think would be a better fit for these tools, that's something that we can look at doing as well. So the eligibility criteria, we have a few different ways to look at this that we would like to present here. So the first option are for home ownership programs would be to restrict funds based on the home value. So that would be, one way to do that would be homes at or below $252,000 based on the total market value for the Lincoln County Tax Assessor's property report data from that most recent year of application. Another option would be to restrict funds to homes valued at or below that 2,000, or 252,000 minus the loan amount requested. And so the reason that we included that additional language is the idea that if if you do that home value minus the loan requested, then that home value would stay within the workforce housing attainability bracket. Another criteria option is to, rather than looking at the home value, look at the income qualification. So we would be looking at primarily residents or applicants between 80 to 120 median family income. Or one option would be restrict funding to that income bracket for the first round of funding, and then open it up to others as needed based on the level of interest in the programs and based on the amount of funding available. Another option that we've talked about in the previous meeting with you all is the home size. So staff has proposed restricting funds to homes approximately 1,200 square feet or less. And then the fourth option is some combination of these criteria. So I'll, I guess, turn it back over to Chair Hinton if you want to lead the discussion here.
Okay. First of all, I'd just like to ask the members if there are any questions that they have so far. the members if there are any questions that they have so far. Oh. Looks like Rick Mark has joined us, so if the record could say that. David, that'd be great. Mr. Appicello, greetings.
Apologies for my late arrival.
That's fine, I'm glad you're here. And Mr. Appicello, welcome. And I don't see, okay, Member Kooz has a question.
Can you remind me why we're restricting the funds based on value or workforce or size as to, just remind me why we're doing that?
Okay, Jody?
Yeah. So the idea behind restricting to the home value, the home values are based off of the income level for a family of four within that eighty to a hundred percent income bracket. So that's another way of defining this criteria to make it available, but not basing it on an income. And that's a lot of the administration of the loan would make it a little bit more feasible, given the staff capacity. So that's why.
Anyone else have any questions before we, Ms. Casper?
Down under income qualifying, B, it says, open up the first round of funding. Would there be timelines for this round of funding? Would there be an educational component to it so people who are in that bracket would understand that this is an option? And then finally, who is it open, who are the others, open it up to others? Who is this others category? Different income?
That's a great question, and I guess the others could be, it could be any residential property or at that point you could restrict just based on home value or home size rather than looking at the income bracket. So it'd be kind of making it a wider range. And the first round, I don't know if round is the correct term to use here, but it would really be based on funding availability. So the first, like, pool of money. And these would be primarily revolving loans. So as those funds come back in, then they could be loaned out again. So the second round, if that was clear at all.
So is it like first come, first served when the funds come in?
So that's what we've done primarily with the commercial programs have been first come, first served. But if you did want to income qualify, then it would be first come, first served for the people or applicants within that income bracket.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, hello, Mr. Chandler. Okay. So Jody, would you like more discussion about these? Would you like us to try and take a stab at how we see how we see these things going? And as you're thinking about that, let me ask you this question. I'm kind of, I was, hmm, I was thinking, I like the, I like the limit of how expensive the houses are that are on the market. I mean, I like us to kind of keep up with that, and I'm assuming that that would change over time to to go with the market, like every couple of years, update it to make sure that we're in sync with what's going on in the market. And so that makes sense to me. I also like the idea about the number B, restrict funds to home units valued at or below two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars minus the loan request. Kind of was trying to figure out how that might work if somebody needed help to begin with, but and I'm also curious because we are trying to, we need housing of all varieties, as you've said. But one of our main targets is that eighty to a hundred and twenty percent. And so I was just thinking, is there a way that we can set it up so, like, first come, first served for that category, eighty to a hundred and twenty percent? And then like after five years or whatever, then we can open it up further? I mean, that sounds complicated, but I'm trying to get at that, at the applicants who might fit that category first. And then if we, you know, if we don't get any takers, then what do we do? But can we, maybe my question is, can we prioritize those? Like if we get, if we say everything goes and we get applicants from a variety of income levels, can we prioritize our target ones first? Do, can you follow?
Yeah, Chair Hinton.
Okay, thank you.
I think that if the agency is wanting to prioritize, then I think staff's recommendation would be to set up your program for that criteria. And you described it exactly how it has been. If there are changes that we need to make to programs, we can do that at any time. We can bring back more information, we can let you know, hey, we've done five loans, and we've had great success, and people are paying, and the improvements have been made. And we haven't had any applications for this program in two years now. So maybe we need to take another look at the program and see if there's something else that we can do with those funds. So I would recommend that if you do want to target workforce, that you do that with this program criteria at the outset. And then we can test it out and see how it goes, and then make any revisions if it's not working.
Okay. Just checking to see if there's any other, anyone else have any questions, comments about this part? Okay, Ms. Casper? And then Mr. Mark.
The, let me see, home size. Funds are restricted to home units approximately twelve hundred square feet or less. I appreciate that amount of space for maybe one or two people. How much less would we go to? I guess it wouldn't matter if you're still under the hundred and two, or two hundred and fifty-two thousand, right?
Yes, and we also left in the word approximately because we gathered from the, when we brought the tools back in May, there was a bit of discussion around the home size, so we added in that approximately language, and I think if that's something that can be taken out, if the home size is, needs to be at that size or not, or it would give way for the agency or the loan and grant committee to be a little bit more lenient with the home size if need be.
Would there be like a maximum, I mean, approximately so many square feet? The maximum amount, would that be too restrictive?
So you would add in the approximately, the maximum would be the one thousand two hundred square feet?
No, I'd leave approximately in there.
Okay.
In case you wanted to go over for a larger accommodation. Not much. No, cancel my comment, approximately fixes it.
Okay.
Having thought out loud with you all listening.
Thank you, Mr. Mark.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, this is me thinking out loud too, and I apologize if maybe this was covered and I missed it at the beginning of the meeting. But I'm looking at the tools and then the eligibility criteria. And the eligibility criteria makes sense to me if someone is already in a home and they could possibly apply for some improvement or energy efficiency loan program or something like that. But if we're talking about building a new building, I'm just wondering if it's feasible for someone at this income level, even with a loan program, to actually be able to build a house, to come up with the money on their own that they need to build the house? I think it's, it's a big hurdle. And I wonder if we're talking about new construction, if if it's possible to open that up to people who have the funds to build houses and then with some sort of promise of renting at a workforce level? Would that make sense?
Yeah, that's a great question, and that's something that you've questioned as well is if you all decide that you do want to income qualify. And if it is for like a new development, like a multifamily that's going to be rented out, then either the program needs to specify that they would be income qualified or the developer and the renter needs to income qualify. So then we have to decide at what point, if you all do want to income qualify, at what point do we make that criteria? And that's something that could be included in the program criteria from the bat. Just stipulating that the the resident needs to income qualify. That would be an option as well.
I'd like to see, I mean, if the idea is to encourage more housing at a certain level, I think that would be a way to go.
Is there any more questions from anyone or comments? Okay, Mr. Anderson?
Thank you.
I think I see your pen up there.
Yeah, well, I thought my hand is up.
Oh, your hand is up, okay.
Yeah, I guess, I like all this stuff with thinking through, but I'm, this is today, or at least now, we're talking from the urban renewal perspective. And I forget now how much money we even have in this toolkit. But that shouldn't preclude us from, you know, working through these because I'm assuming these could roll right over into city council and/or five years from today, when there's money in a new urban renewal district, we could put money in the bank and have these tools, and they could be revised. But I'm agreeing, I think with what I'm hearing from councillor Mark, you know, focusing on a a limit, a targeted group, and we've always talked about the workforce arena. And so, you know, if we're going to look at eligibility criteria, then I would just, I think, Madam Chair, you indicated also, you know, this two hundred and fifty thousand minus the loan, you know, that's a criteria that the data says people at least in that income range, sixty or eighty to a hundred and twenty, could qualify for that kind of a price range. And then you, so you use that dollar amount criteria, use an income amount, and you also use the square footage. And I think what that does is says, it's probably a rehab loan that you're looking at. You'd go target a, an existing home in the area and upgrade it you know, to a livability standards, standards, as long as it didn't come, you know, over the two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. I honestly don't know how much money we will ever have for these kind of loans. When I look above at the tools, you know, I'm wondering out loud, aren't we better equipped to do the urban renewal business of you know, the facade loan, you know, by including residential? You get more units. And overall, that's what we want. The last item in that number one section is workforce housing, and you're actually talking about construction loans, which would take up a great deal of our money. So I guess where I'm coming from is I would say that our interest level is in finding or facilitating housing for this sixty to a hundred and twenty percent median or income potential borrower. And by using, you know, these tools above, and by that, your loan limit of two hundred and fifty-two, or not loan limit, your price qualifies folks, you know, you've got the criteria here. So it kind of feels like we're working overtime to get to, you know, where we really want to go, if that's what we want to do, if we want to emphasize workforce housing. And I think that's the, really, the question on the table.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kooz, do you have another question? I see your hand is up. Your hand is down, okay. All right, thank you.
I've got a housekeeping kind of question.
Sure.
I'm reading again the eligibility criteria and restrict funds based on home value. I understand A, restrict funds to home units valued at or below two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. B says restrict funds to home units valued at or below two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars minus the loan requested amount. I'm having trouble, I don't get that, I don't really understand what that's telling me. The home value would be if you need to borrow a hundred thousand dollars, then I'm not really sure how it's different from B, just help me out there.
Yeah, that's a good question, and that's, so if you're borrowing a hundred thousand dollars, then the idea would be to lower the home value based on what they're borrowing. So it would be looking at homes valued at a hundred and fifty-two rather than two hundred and fifty-two?
That, I mean, if you put, take a loan out on your house, then you're reducing the equity value of that house. Why would you do, what are you accomplishing by, by by going to B? What does that do as far as the program?
No, the reason we included this as an option is, again, based on the conversation we had back in May, there was a lot of concern that these programs, especially for the facade improvement and energy efficiency loans, if they might be used to push these properties out of the workforce housing market and flip the house. So this isn't, maybe it's not the the place to put it in the eligibility criteria, but it's one option to address that possibility.
Okay, I guess I see where you're going. It's not really just, maybe there's another way to phrase that, I don't know.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah. At least I interpreted it that a individual conceivably could buy a house for the hundred and fifty thousand and get a rehab loan from Urban Renewal for a hundred thousand. And that keeps it under the two hundred and fifty-two thousand. What you don't want is someone buying a house, I think, buying a house at two hundred and forty thousand and getting a hundred thousand dollar loan. And, you know, going up, just because they originally owned it or bought it at, under your loan, under your sales price limit, you don't want them, you have you, you don't want them, you, after rehabbing it, having it up at 350,000 and kind of defeating the purpose, i- if our purpose is to provide housing at a workforce affordability level. But.
Then, then maybe that, that's making more sense to me. Then maybe that minus the loan requested amount just needs to be built into number A rather than having this look like two separate categories. Because.
Oh, I think they are two separate categories.
They are. They are two separate categories. And they're asking, staff's asking us to refine it. Do we want A or do we want B?
Right.
Rather than having both of them.
I see. Well, that's, that, the way, uh, uh, the mayor described it, I, I, it makes sense to me. So, yeah, I would, I would, on that basis, I'd go with B. Just in, I would just incorporate that, that language. I would incorporate the language in B into A and just make it one category is what I'm trying to say.
Okay. I don't see any other hands up. Does anyone else have an opinion about number one, A or B?
Uh, this eligibility criteria?
Yes.
So, yeah, no, B.
Yeah, so you have a, Jody, you have a couple of Bs. And I like B as well. We, we want to get the housing out there. We want it to be affordable and we want it to stay in that category so it doesn't get flipped into something more expensive and out of, out of reach for people. I believe that's, that's what that accomplishes, if that's what everyone is considering.
Well, you know, Chair, Madam Chair, just remember that it, we have no provisions that would keep it there. It's not like the land trust. Um, so we're at least starting, uh, trying to add inventory at that level. And then appreciation and, uh, good care should escalate and build equity for someone. But at least to your point, we're, we're not giving somebody a home run right out of the chute.
Yeah, we don't, we're not looking for flipping them.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Mark, do you have more?
Uh, yeah, uh, Dick addressed the, uh, thing in the back of my mind. We did have, what was that program? Where, where we were talking about the villages where 20% of the housing would have to, uh, remain in that homeowner's possession for five years. And I was concerned that five years was too short a time span. So, uh, you know, home values do shoot up really quickly. Is there a way to, had, had, did anybody consider a way to build in a, um, restriction on profit making on, on these houses? Or is that something, I don't know, is that something we should be thinking about?
Yeah, uh, I think, you know, there's two ways to do this. I mean, you could do a deed restriction, um, but, um, you know, you're also asking people to restrict their future possible profit, um, with their equity investment. And, um, it could be that, um, again, this is up to you all to decide. But it could be that you decide not to allow single family, uh, units to apply for this program, that you want to focus on multifamily. We will get, um, as we move through this PowerPoint, we'll get into more specific questions. But the, um, you know, it's tough. Uh, when we are doing a loan, we are looking at a snapshot in time from when that loan comes in, uh, for an application. And, um, and this happens with affordable housing programs across the board. Uh, someone may qualify in 2020 and, um, we all want to imagine that people, um, can realize whatever, uh, professional or personal, um, dreams they would like. Um, and if that is based on, uh, making more money, then they 10 years from now may not qualify for the same program. Um, and that's just a reality of how housing programs work. So, um, if you want to design a program and make it available to workforce housing, um, then, you know, that is really just at the time of the application. And, uh, we like to think that our property values are increasing. We know that, um, you know, we're in Oregon, so those, uh, increases, um, are restricted. But, um, you know, over time, then that person, if, if they're at 252 now, um, and they borrow a hundred thousand dollars, so they have a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar home now, um, and they put in a hundred thousand, you know, five or 10 years from now, it will be worth more than 252,000. Um, and, um, you know, you all are right as well that that, um, average, uh, amount that we want to be looking at for the tax assessors' property report data for the most recent year, we would use that. And so that would, um, kind of move with the, um, applications. So I, I think that this is really the best way that we can a- address, um, you know, the, the idea of a single family homeowner, uh, coming in and, uh, not being able to flip the home. Now, we, yeah, it just depends. It depends on, uh, a lot of things. And, um, we do have limited funds and, and, um, so how can we, how can we make the most impact? Um, and where are there programs that already exist? And then who is not getting funded? Uh, often, uh, I think we use the term workforce housing, but, um, really we have, uh, members in our community at all income brackets of, uh, for workforce. And so, um, often you'll hear people say missing middle. Uh, there are lots of housing programs for 80% of median family income and below, but not a lot for the 80 to 120%, uh, which is something that we call the missing middle. Um, so lots of things to consider, which is, you know, why we're glad to be having this conversation with you and, and kind of kick some things around and, and get some feedback about how you want programs developed.
Yeah, and Mr. Mark also, that 252,000 dollar, that moves. Um, I think you came in after that part of the conversation perhaps, but, um, that's updated every year, every couple of years or however often we suggest that it gets updated. So that, so it'll, so if the house is assessed at more, then, um, so will be their background for their loan amount. And Mr. Anderson?
And it's, Madam Chair, just the, uh, other comment I would add is, remember, this is a loan. This, this is different from a grant. So the only thing that the advantage someone is getting is no interest in theory. So, and I think, you know, our proposal is still 10-year term. Um, so it's, it's no interest. So, you know, I, I guess at today's interest rates, you know, it's, you know, anything helps. But in, in reasonable terms, it's not all that much money. That you, that if I were on the other side as a borrower, that I'd let you restrict me for, you know, 20 years, uh, you know, even 10 years. Um, so I, I think you have to think through that of how much of a subsidy they're getting and put that into reason.
Okay, any other questions for this slide? Mr. Mark?
Yeah, just, just another thought to follow up on what Allison was saying. And I, I get the reality of how difficult these programs are, but it just, that just made me think that, given how difficult it is to, for people who are making 15 dollars an hour to get out of their apartments into a homeownership. And, uh, it, it's really tough. And, um, there's such a need out there. And I, I wonder if, if we focus, I guess where I'm going, trying to go is if we focus this money on building homes for homeownership, then you're kind of checking them off one slow notch at a time. But if we focus the money on helping the rental market, then maybe we're, we'd be serving more people more quickly. I, I'm, I'm really just kind of kicking this around in my, in my head. Now, another thought I just had, uh, since, uh, Mr. Anderson mentioned the 0% interest. Is there a formula where, I mean, because inflation does occur, so if we're loan, loaning money at 0% interest and it's coming back to us dollar for dollar, are we actually, is it, do we need to be aware that we're actually losing money over time on that, that fund? Is that, is that a legitimate way to, to think about it?
Hey, Jody? Did you have, I thought I saw your hand up. Allison, can you respond to his questions? Thank you.
Sure. Um, so yes, the, the fund does erode over time because of the cost. Um, when we started the facade improvement loan for commercial properties, um, and that was for existing properties only, uh, not new construction. We still do not have new construction loans. Um, in, uh, one case, we did end up with a new construction, but our funds went in after the other lender went in. Um, so that, um, you know, the property was kind of half constructed and there was some value on the property before the public funds went in. It wasn't just a land value. Um, and so, um, yes, I mean, there are costs to administer the loan. There are costs to do the loan review, which you all, um, considered and, and passed earlier in your meeting this evening. So, um, and, and that's not to mention the staff time that goes into preparing the packet and, and those kinds of things. So we are, um, it, it is a publicly funded program. Um, and there are costs to that program in, including the 0% interest. Uh, we have, uh, in past conversations, talked about the possibility of, um, charging a small interest rate, maybe half a percent, 1%, 2%. Depends on what type of program in order to help cover the administrative costs of that program. Um, and, uh, we have not at this time talked about that. Um, we were more focused on just getting the toolbox programs and the criteria on the ground. Um, and then we were going to circle back later to see if, uh, there was any interest on your part of, um, doing some kind of an interest rate. There, there are pros and cons to doing interest rates. And, um, in general, it gets a little more complicated uh, with accounting and annual reporting and tracking and things like that. So the 0% interest rate is the simplest administratively, um, to make available.
Okay, I don't see anyone's hand up. So perhaps we're ready for the other, the next slide.
These are just some notes that we've collected from conversations with, um, developers and residential policy experts. Um, so I wanted to include this just to give you an idea of, um, what other agencies are doing. Um, and it just, housing is, uh, very complicated. Um, and it's, um, big questions to tackle. Um, so we just wanted to include this to give a little more context. But it sounds like, if, if I'm understanding correctly, it sounds like you all wanted to, uh, include the all criteria, so the home value, that income qualify for that missing middle and home size, is that correct?
That's what I heard.
Okay.
The combination, at least now. I think it would be helpful if we, um, in the future, could maybe take, um, a scenario of an actual, maybe not actual, but a, um, someone, um, requesting a loan and how, I mean, just an example of how it works to go through it, but.
Okay. Uh, are we ready to move on to the next question? Okay, so, um, once you look past the, uh, eligibility criteria for income and home value, uh, we also wanted to think about what types of housing units should be targeted. Um, so do you need to focus on the, uh, single family detached, multifamily duplex, triplex or four flat dwellings, cottage clusters, ADUs? Or, uh, make these programs available for all residential types, uh, given the, uh, eligibility criteria we just discussed? So this is really how specific do these programs need to be?
Well, I have an initial question. Could we go back to that list again? Thank you. Um, if we wouldn't, hmm. I'm not sure how the criteria that we just discussed would work for like a multifamily housing, for example. That, um, amount of money, for example. I, I mean, I'm, you want to talk through this a little bit? How you could see the criteria working or not working for each of these?
Yes, yeah. So, uh, single family detached would be a little simpler. But again, for the multifamily, if it is, uh, the income qualified, then the program criteria would need to either specify that the resident or the renter of the property needs to be within that income bracket or the developer of that property needs to do the income qualifying.
Okay. So, members, do any of you have any questions, comments? Want to throw your weight around on any of these? You have no preference over housing type? Mr. Mark?
Yeah, I, I, I don't have a preference, but I, like, when I see, uh, include accessory dwelling units, which I, I think might be a great way to add small little dwelling units a- around town. But again, I, I'm just thinking, and I, I'm sort of thinking anecdotally. I mean, I know some people who own a lot of rental property. And, you know, these are well-heeled individuals. They've got, they're, they're way above any, uh, income qualification levels. But those are the people who are in position to actually build an accessory dwelling unit. And, and they might be, they might have a lot of money, but maybe they don't quite have enough to feel comfortable doing an ADU, for example. But with a loan program like this, they could do it. And that's, oh, is that a way of, a route to increase our housing stock? So, I, I mean, I don't know the, I, I know we want to focus our money on the people with the greatest need and not help rich people make even more money. But, um, what's the reality of actually accomplishing our goal here? And I don't know the answer. I'm just, it's just what's kicking around in my head.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, the, the answer to that, Rick, is really the same thing as a multifamily. You'd, um, get some kind of commitment from the, you know, well-heeled borrower, uh, that you described, um, to rent this property to a qualified, you know, income-qualified targeted borrower for X period of time. So, you know, that's the same thing you'd do on multifamily. You'd have some kind of a, an arrangement with the owner, developer, property manager, that, you know, this is who your tenant would be.
Ms. Casper?
Yes. If, if we're trying to attract housing units, I'm for leaving a combination of any of the above.
Okay.
Agreed, all of them.
Yeah, whatever.
Mr. Mark?
Yeah, yeah, agreed. And, uh, I had a, something jumped in my head just as, as, uh, Mayor Anderson was speaking. And it was of, um, I agree with what he said, so, but I can't remember. I just lost it. I can't remember what it was, it, it, the thought that he inspired, but I guess it was fleeting, so never mind.
Okay, we'll come back to you in a minute, how about? Um, I would, I would just like to check in with our members who have been quiet lately. Uh, Mr. Hoagland, do you have any comments? You, you like all of these options? To keep them all in, you don't want to toss one out?
I'm not for the ADUs.
Okay. Do you, do you have a, a little more for us about that? Do, can you tell us why?
It just doesn't, I don't.
I don't, there haven't been, maybe there haven't, they haven't been built yet, as I believe. And so even though that we've had that ability for quite some time, you know, the ADUs that do come to mind are the ones in Olivia Beach. And I wouldn't want that to be what we see, you know, is converting garages to two stories to then put people above it. I don't know. Maybe that's what, if that was popular, it would be in place already. And I don't hear many people living that way.
Yeah, I think it is in other areas where housing space is limited to make, you know, to build new houses and things like that. It's, but maybe not so much here. Mr. Parsons?
Nope, I'm on board. Having a good conversation. All of my questions have been answered before I can ask them, so.
Well, I'm gonna ask. Okay, you like them all. Okay, great. Ms. Kuz, do you have any?
Well, I, I know that the qualification is 1,200 square feet or less. If we're talking about a duplex, triplex, four-flat, is that considered each dwelling? How do you get 1,200 square feet in a four-flat? So I'm a little confused on that, but I'm open, I'm listening.
Yeah, agency member Kuz, we're talking about per residential unit. So when we're talking about, you know, the Housing Needs Assessment is calling for us to build an average of 82 units per year. If someone built a four-flat dwelling, they, the, each dwelling unit in the four-flat would need to be 1,200 square feet or less. And that would count as four units in that year for us as a city working toward that 82 per year average.
Thank you.
And for myself, I would just, I like all of them. The one that I think I probably jump over the fence over towards Mr. Hoagland's, thinking I'm not sure that ADUs. I can see some value in that, but, but I, I need to be convinced, I guess. But other than that, they're all good.
Yeah, and if I might add that ADUs are unique, and I agree that we haven't had very many. And we also want to make sure that we're not, you know, that we're creating the right incentives for people to increase units to the populations that you are trying to serve through these programs. I did do a quick look, the, if someone were to build an 800-square-foot home in their backyard as an ADU, this is like detached. I didn't get to the cost per square foot of construction. But over 10 years, if they were to rent that 800-square-foot home for $800 a month, which would be, I think, low, for 12 months a year, which would be $9,600 a year, over the 10 years of them paying back that loan, they would make about $96,000. We would obviously need to restrict the tenant income. And a lot of these things get kind of tricky to do, which is why I think it's good when we can partner with other organizations who are doing this kind of tricky administrative type of thing. But Jody and I are prepared to figure out how to implement whatever programs you decide you want to do. And if we're finding difficulties with that, we will definitely be coming back to you to explain what we can and can't do and what the cost would be if it gets too complicated. So that's just an example of the revenue that somebody could make. Again, for an 800-square-foot ADU, charging $800 a month rent, they would make over 10 years about $96,000. So, you know, how much did they borrow over that 10 years? Did they borrow $100,000 to build it? I don't know if you could build an 800-square-foot home for $100,000. I have a feeling it probably costs more than that. So anyway, just wanted to add that to the conversation.
Okay. I appreciate those type of examples. That's helpful. Okay, Mr. Mark, do you have another comment?
I did remember, then I lost it, then I remembered, then I lost it, and then I wrote it down.
Okay.
Which is, I remember hearing comments at some of these meetings from Allison about having these tools out there and people not taking advantage of them. And we have these programs and they're not being used. And the money's there and people aren't asking for it. And I think that, and I hope I'm not misstating Allison White. I've heard from you over time. But I think that maybe is in the back of my head when I'm saying, if we're going to have these programs, they need to be available to people who can use them. And if we're not realistically targeting the funds to people who can afford to do these things, then we're not really getting anywhere. And, and that's why I like the idea of all of the above, because there could be people out there, you know, with the given restrictions on who it is that they're renting to. That I, I, I think, I think we would make more gains if, if we worried less about income qualifications and just focused on, on the income of the people who are in the dwellings. Does that make sense?
I think so. The renters are, that would be the income that you'd be more interested in? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Other than the person buying, or I mean, building?
I'm in the program, yes.
All right, got, gotcha. Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, just, if I can go back to the ADU, you know, I guess I wasn't even, I don't think of an ADU at 800 square feet. So I'm down to remember the, the other projects we've looked at and discussed and the supposed need for one-bedroom units, even studio units. I think there's a lot of people in this community that really aren't, you have difficulty finding a roommate, would gladly live in a one-bedroom or a studio. And then, if they could get it at the right price, rent. So, you know, I'm hoping, and have always, that the ADU would kind of meet that need in a backyard, you know, over a garage, something, nothing so glamorous. And, you know, to the earlier point, you know, I think we've just got to keep working these to figure out what the formula is that's missing if the funds aren't being taken care of and the end of the day, the units aren't being built, whether it's ADUs or single-family or anything else. There's, you, we've got to not let it just sit on the shelf and keep dusting it off and figure out why. So, thank you.
Okay, okay. Allison, did you get what you need for this slide? Jody? Okay. So maybe, yeah, so maybe if we move on to the next topic. And as you're setting that up, I just want to recognize Anne Marie. Hello. Thank you for joining us. Okay, back to you, Jody.
Did you want to go over any of these notes? Or do you want me to go on to the next topic?
Oh, you can go. I'll be quiet. You decide.
Sorry to take over. Yeah, I think if we can, for the sake of time, go to the next question. And then if we have time, we can go back to those notes. So, the next question, and we've kind of talked around this a little bit already, is should these be for owner-occupied dwelling units or renter-occupied? Do you want to include second homes or short-term rentals or some combination of the above?
I love this question. Anyway, I'll hold my thoughts. Who would like to jump in on this one? Are you kidding? I thought I would see everybody's hand raised. Okay, here they come, here they come. Okay, Mr. Parsons?
I'm for one and two and not necessarily three at the moment.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I think that's, you know, our area of focus definitely would be, you know, renters or, you know, long-term renters or owner-occupied. But I think both those have to have a combination of some kind of restriction, criteria, that they keep it to that income limit for some period of time or whatever, depending on how much. Just keep that in mind.
Ms. Casper?
Yeah, I agree. I'm in favor of number one and two and keep it within a specific income range.
Okay, Ms. Kuz?
Me too. I'm for one and two and not so hot on number three.
Okay, Mr. Hoagland?
Same.
I think, did you say same? I'm sorry.
One and two.
One and two, okay. Okay, that leaves me, and I agree, one and two. Stick with that income category of criteria. Okay, how about if we go to our next category? Thank you.
So, the next question is, who should be able to apply? And so that's really getting at, who do you want to partner with? Whether that's only partnering with nonprofit developers or including for-profit or private property owners developing residential units?
All right. Does anyone have, Mr. Anderson? Well, you're ready for this, aren't you?
Anticipation. I, I'm planning to work with Jeopardy and do the buttons, you know, and go.
Uh huh. You're doing good. You're hitting them first.
You know, I'm for allowing all the last one, the application for nonprofits, for-profits, private property owners. Because we've got the criteria. If we're focusing on the end user of the product, you know, we can, you know, we just need somebody to build these things. So I think we can manage, you know, whether we want to deal with that.
How do you spell H I T? Right?
Riley, you're not muted.
Oh, sorry. I don't know how to spell H I T, guys. I apologize.
H T I G H T.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Diane Kuz, I'm just going to go down the list here.
I, I, don't put my hand up.
I know, but I'm calling on you.
Oh, I'm open to all of them. Anybody who'll build.
All right. Ms. Casper, you're next on my screen.
I'm wondering if nonprofits have restrictions that we have to be aware of? Or don't we have to worry about that? But otherwise, I'm for anything that will be appropriate for the income that we're looking at.
Okay, we'll come back around to that question. Mr. Hoagland, you're next. Here are the next picture on my screen.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm open to hearing positive, you know, aspects of that. But leaning, yeah, leaning towards private property owners, but we'll see.
Okay, Mr. Parsons?
I agree with the mayor. I'm open to all of these as long as they meet the criteria that we're setting for income.
Okay, Mr. Mark?
All of the above.
Okay. Well, I am also in that all-of-the-above category. I think wherever we can get people's interest to start building housing in Lincoln City, we try and take that up as long as they follow the criteria and get going with it, right?
And Chair Hinton, just to circle back on the question from agency member Casper, restrictions on nonprofits. The nonprofits, if they do have restrictions, they would be bringing that forward in their application. For example, we have, you know, in Lincoln City, we are partnering with Innovative Housing, Inc. to do a multifamily housing rental project in the north part of town. And as another comparison, the Newport project that just built, I think it was 110 rental restricted-income apartment units. That project was built by a for-profit developer. So we have similar projects in two different towns, one nonprofit and one for-profit, both very viable sorts of projects.
Okay. All right. And, so now we're back to Jody, huh?
Yes, and that's the end of the policy questions we had for you. So from here, Allison, I feel like we have a better idea of what these programs, who they will be designed for and how they will be used. So in the future, we can bring them back, actually defined with the criteria. And we will be having a similar discussion with city council later this evening, so, different hats on, so.
Hopefully you don't get different questions, I mean, answers. Maybe we can shorten it to the, to the short version of them all. Okay, thank you so much. I know we're all over the place at some times, and I appreciate seeing it all wrapped up on a slideshow. And I hope that we gave you enough good answers. But you know where we are. You can always come back and get more information. Okay, I'm just going to quickly go through. Mr. Anderson, it looked like you had your pencil up again.
I did. Before we leave this, I'm just wondering, you know, whenever I see a document like this, and it always refreshes me, looking at the top number-one category, you know, economic development tools are encouraged in improved housing. You know, I wonder if there's a reason why this number-two, the energy-efficient loan program, we only deal with existing commercial buildings? Why, you know, if, why we couldn't step in to assist, perhaps in encouraging, you know, any, even new construction, to put in maybe a next level of energy efficiency or something? Just, it's a question. The other that came to my mind there under, you know, it's not energy efficiency, but, you know, I'm thinking out loud, our water is so precious. And, you know, I'm, I'm thinking low-flow toilets, for example. For a, an apartment complex to swap out toilets would probably be very expensive. And here might be a vehicle, a loan vehicle, if we so saw the need or could fit it under energy efficiency somehow. You know, you know, isn't that some of the things we're trying to do? And it just, as I was going through this, you know, popped up at me.
Allison?
I know the agency has nothing else to do, so, you know.
No, those are, those are great questions. And, yeah, we can, we can read that and come back to you with some feedback. I mean, water efficiency makes sense with energy efficiency. I just, I don't know, have to give it some thought to see who, who has programs like that and see if they make sense. And maybe contact a few apartment owners, apartment complex owners, and see if there's some kind of interest in that sort of a program.
Good question.
Thanks for thinking outside the box.
Yep. Okay, I'm just going to quickly go through everyone we just heard from Mr. Anderson. Diane Kuz, you're next on my screen. Do you have any parting shots? I mean, comments?
Nope.
No. Judy Casper? Any comments?
No, looking forward to see things move along.
Me too. Mr. Parsons?
Nope.
Okay, Mr. Mark?
Nothing more for me. Great job again, urban renewal staff. Thank you.
Yeah, excellent. Mr. Hoagland? Nothing? Okay. And I have nothing, but thanks. And, Mr. Anderson, as you put on your mayor hat, how about giving us five minutes?
Yeah, I think we need five minutes. Thanks.
Thank you. We are adjourned.